Today is Monday, September 8, 2005. It's nine AM, 9:05 AM exactly. We're at B County Courthouse, Commission Court Room 110, 105 West Corpus Christi Street, B-102. This is the Fisher Call to Order, and do we have a volunteer who'd like to say a prayer? Could you please, John Fisher, please, and say a prayer?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity to be here to serve this court, to serve this county and our people. We thank you for the abundance of rain and continue to ask for more rain. Thank you for all the blessings that you've brought for us, the ones we recognize and the ones we don't. Watch over everything that we do today while we do the county business and guide us in all that we do. In Jesus' name we pray.
Pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as its own. Texas, please.
I'm in Texas. I'm in Texas. One hundred and fifty.
Welcome everybody here to the county. And it's time to recognize visitors. If you're a visitor and you'd like to be recognized, this is your chance to say I'm whoever I am and I'm here. It's not a chance for public talk, but if you'd like to be recognized at this time. Can you move along? Commissioners open your eyes.
Okay. Good morning. I attended the Pettis Volunteer Fire Department annual fish fry. That was a good turnout. If you haven't gone, many pile the fish on, don't they? It was really good, very well attended, very well cooked. Thank all the people that went and fire department put that on. Also, I hosted a movie night for St. Mary's Academy. They had called and asked if I would do one for grandparents' night. And we had around 200 people show up for that, so that was a lot of people. They weren't expecting that many, you know? Movie starts and it's like, we're out of food. But anyway, it was a good deal. A lot of people showed up for it. I want to thank Robbie Guerrero and Ray Munoz for helping me. We got a cross put up at San Pedro Cemetery I built, the one I think I mentioned last time. It was decayed and it was, could fall over pretty easily because it was so rocky. And we got it put up. Also, we got another 300 gallon container put out there for people to water their plants, flowers, trees, and stuff like that. And multiple signs put up on them. So that was all that got done. I want to thank Road and Bridge for all their boom acting they got done in Blueberry Hill. And also, right now, they're currently on Central Lane. So they did a great job out there. I had people call me and telling me how good the roads look and thanking me for it. Also, got hold of them about some brush pickup and out on County Road 502, there was some really, really bad potholes. The guy called me like, man, you're gonna lose a run in if you go down that road. So Jonathan told me they would go ahead and take care of that this week as well. What you guys keep in mind, you know, as commissioners, we call Road and Bridge and ask them to do things, and the public can also call Road and Bridge to do things. One thing to keep in mind, if you call in and say it's a county road with a few potholes in it, okay, they're gonna put it down. But then say you have someone call in that's got a big tree that's across the county road. Well, they gotta, it's kinda like what you do in an emergency room with patients, you gotta triage. So that tree across the county road is priority over a county road with a few little potholes. They're gonna get to it, but they gotta go take care of this first. So if you call in about something and they didn't get to it that day and you're expecting it, just keep in mind that they've got a whole list of things that they've gotta do. So, but I assure you, it is on the board and they will get to it. Also, I want to thank our VSO, Sandra Musca. She got me the military flags there for the veteran memorial park. Those flags were in bad, bad shape. So I got those all put up actually yesterday. And also, I will be attending the 911 first responders dinner this Thursday. With that, I'll pass to my left.
I will go left. Commissioner Oliver, would you like to say?
Sure, absolutely. Good morning, everyone. Actually, two weeks ago now, it's been going so quick. I attended the legislative council conference there in Austin. It was a great session. One of the sessions that I did sit in was safeguarding our elections, which, you know, that's one very dear to you. A lot of great information was forthcoming and it was a really good session. Learned a lot in sitting in some of these sessions. We also had representation from other county staff that were with us. As far as, kind of give you an update on the old jail repurposing, things are going well. Last week, I facilitated a meeting with some key players to develop and finalize our contracting strategies and also identify some start state. We also discussed some of our IT needs, so we're gonna be probably looking at a few extra dollars to get that in, but we've gotta have that part of the scope as well. I want to thank Johnny Zagidi and his team. They went through the facilities and started cleaning it up and making it safe ready, which was great for us because as of today, we're gonna start the plumbing, and we're looking about two weeks to get the plumbing complete. So false start move with that. We still need to meet with some of our other contractors to finalize cost, timing, and just to make sure, excuse me, that the scope of work is clearly understood and completely Also, we had a meeting last week to finalize the final steps to our EOC ribbon cutting celebration, which will be on September 22. We have a few several hatch and items that need to complete. We'll be ready to get that started. We did have one little bit of setback. The workforce solution that was scheduled to be in Skidmore on October 2nd, they had some problems with their mobile office, so we moved that back to, you know, September, I'm sorry, October 2nd from 10 to 2. So there'll be part of the DBC's office there in Skidmore. I also want to recognize Road and Bridge Department here. They, again, cutting, getting to cut some of the overgrown trees, hatch and valleys near County Road 536, so that's been done. Toner and add request, I'm still working on, is the alleyways, rightaways, easements, there's still a big question, who actually owns that and who should be maintained. And I spoke to several people, and it's an area that appears to be abandoned. And the way, I've not seen anything in writing, but the way it's understood is that whoever you're between the two lots and there's a 20-foot easement, one landowner gets 10-foot, the other landowner gets 10-foot. However, that being said, that doesn't mean it's being cleaned up. The ones that are calling me and letting me know that they're looking, they want someone to go in and clean that area up, it's been over the years, been utilized as a minimum down. However, there are some residents that do a fantastic job of keeping the grass cut, so they're doing this very well. On Wednesday, this Wednesday coming September 10th at 6:30, I'll be hosting a town hall meeting with Hanson Engineering and also the residents to discuss the upcoming enhancements of County Road 631 and civil prepared improvements and also tiner water. So looking forward to that meeting and then, Commissioner, we have another meeting with Pettis.
You've been having such a big four years, so that's why you took it.
So that'll be coming. So a lot of good things are happening, so.
Commissioner.
All right. Main thing we've been working on now, last, two weeks ago, we passed to get two water wells drilled, one at the sheriff's office and one at the EOC. After we had a meeting with TZQ, that's Chief Kirk and I, he set this meeting up, and we had a Zoom meeting with all the engineers, that's not gonna be possible. We can't, B County can't afford to drill a well and become a public water source for either one. It's just way out in the stars, we can't afford that. They did offer an alternative, and the alternative is to put a storage tank, you know, regulation, I mean, no hoops to jump or anything like that. We have a storage tank with a pot of water and it'll suffice, so we just need one big enough. And I know the Chief Kirk's already got two bids for a tank for the sheriff's office, and he's working on a third. So with that, that one's going pretty good. So first plan didn't work out, but plan beats moving forward. I had a pro tank for the boiler that hasn't been forgotten. They came to do a walkthrough, and I believe their equipment arrives here tomorrow at the courthouse for the heating system tomorrow, when it'll begin. They said it'll take about probably two weeks to complete from start to finish, so we're looking forward to seeing them come forward and getting all that. They did a, big thank you to maintenance, they did a walkthrough with Johnny Zagiri, and they helped, and they got their extra notes, so everything's moving forward. Boiler hoping it's winter, hopefully they won't have a lot of, too hot, too cold winter coats and heaters and everything else on it here. So that's going forward. I attended the signing of the beam for the BISD for the new school. That was real nice out there, they had a, it was hot, too. They had all that up there with the RA Hall for the new school, so. And then we had a preventative maintenance and safety meeting over at the EOC, that's our quarterly meeting, and moving forward, that's going to do all of our equipments moving forward. We got a couple air conditions that we're looking at for the Justice Building, and then I know there's a few other items, but that is also coming along real good as preventative maintenance for the county. Okay? And let me see, I went to receive our giant check for 4.7 million in Corpus Christi from Commissioner Buckingham for the GLO, and I was in Corpus Christi, and they had all the other cities and all the other counties there receiving their checks for their share. So that was pretty awesome last Thursday. And then I also had another meeting with two of the installers that came down here, again with the sheriff's office, they're trying to get a location, and we're moving on that there. So I attended the Pettis to let up volunteer fire department fish fry, and like the commissioner said, it was very well served, man, that food was great, so had a good time there. I didn't win any prizes, but, you know. And then I had two brush calls, and I called those into Road and Bridge, and they already put them on the list, one for potholes, but I think they got something they're putting in Pawnee right now, so they're moving back toward me. With that, I'm very glad.
Thank you, Commissioner. I want to add on to what Commissioner Lenny was talking about, county roads. If we don't know there's a pothole, we can't fix it. So let us know. I've had people say, man, there's potholes everywhere, it's like, like, there's nothing there. What some people consider a pothole is a divot in the pavement. But I was at the sale barn Friday, and while I was there, a gentleman came up and said, hey, have you seen the big hole that just came up in Charcoal Road? I said, no, sir. I said, I was on Charcoal Road two days ago and there was no hole. Where is the hole? He said, just past Ray Lane. He said, it just opened up in the middle of the county road. And he was the kind of person that doesn't make stuff up, it's, there must be a hole. So I drove out there, and lo and behold, in the middle of the county road, there's no cover nearby, about this deep, about that wide, and about 10 foot long, it just fell in. Literally fell in, and the pavement you could see was still cracking going in east direction. And it was one of those situations where it's extremely hazardous, you could break an axle, you could break the tire, whatever. So Fridays are real interesting with Road and Bridge, because they have a minimum staff on work on Fridays because they work four tens. One staff works Friday. Got a hold of Road and Bridge, they dropped everything they were doing, they got out there and fixed it. And this was before all this rain, thank goodness, because it was, I don't know why it started, what made it happen, but it just, a hole. And if we hadn't fixed it, within a couple days, it would've been bigger than this whole deck, and it would've been extremely hazardous. So let us know where they are. If we don't know, we can't fix them. Just to say, oh, there's potholes everywhere, great, where? Tell us. And tell us, oh, it's on County Road 113. Where on County Road 113? Some of those county roads, especially in north end of the county, are four and five miles long. So we need to know exactly where those things are. But thank you for bringing that up.
It started on a region to you. And then it started moving toward you.
Starting, it's moving towards you. Okay. Also, I was in Pawnee picking up some feed this week. There was a young man in the feed store said, I'm gonna build some houses in Pawnee. I said, really? Yep. He said, my name is Andrew Beltran III, and I just bought some property across the street, which is Highway 72 from the feed store. I said, how many you gonna build? He said, several. I said, really? I said, have you checked with our community parish department on the rules? No. No, I don't need to, our engineer knows everything that needs to be done. I said, sir, I want to tell you, you need to check with the community parish, that way you won't have to do things. Why? He said, I already know about the five acre rule. I said, that's great. And he said, I'm gonna build something out in Tynan, too. I said, what do you mean? He said, yeah, I'm gonna build several in Tynan and in San Patricia County right next to Tynan. I said, have you talked to the commissioner of that? No. Who is that? I told him. I said, but before you do anything, please get with our community parish director, and that way you won't be doing things. Well, I've already talked to AEP, and I've talked to Ellosa, I've got the water set up, I've got the electricity set up. I said, trust me. Talk to Mr. Jensen, just to be sure you've got everything that you need to be. Very energetic young man. The name of his company, this is, and he wrote it down for me, Hot Paws Land LLC. So we'll see how it works. We may have a new housing development going in in Pawnee, maybe he knows something we don't. But that's, that's the interesting stuff that's coming out. Okay, back to the sale barn. You know, we talked about cattle prices staying up. I had a cow that I had to take in, she was one of those cows that, she was mean and she was gonna hurt somebody, and I finally got the condition perfect, took her in. Well, I went to the sale barn to make sure she went through the sale. It's kinda like, if you have somebody you really, 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 really don't like, you go to their funeral, be sure they're dead. I went to the sale barn to make sure she went through the sale. Really? She was that bad.
I'll be commiserated with.
What I'm leading up to, usually cattle that are sold like that for packers and cutters, 50, 60, 70 cents a pound, dollar seventy-one a pound. So the price is still up, if you have cattle that need to go in, if you have one you really, really want to like and need to get rid of.
Keep that in mind, sir.
There you go. Let's talk about rain. Went to the ranch yesterday to check the water, and it started sprinkling. And I'm sitting out there watching the sprinkling, and I got two tents, and I was proud. I went through mineral, water and mineral. The closer I got to Beeville on 673, which is the highway from Beeville to Pawnee, more and more water. I have never in my life seen water in the dishes like they were between Meadow Cemetery Road and 2824, which is for a friendship church, where the road makes a curve there in Wildcat Lane, the water was about a foot and a half over the road. I could not believe it. I got as far as I could on the left-hand side, and it's still about six, eight inches deep going through the water. Okay, let's keep that in back of your mind. So I get home, we had two inches of house. I get a call from Blueberry Hill, they had four inches of Blueberry Hill. I'm guessing, and I'm not meteorologist, there was six to eight to 10 inches in that area around the Wildcat Lane. There was water everywhere. So I was talking to folks this morning further south, they got nothing. So the rain was real spotty, and the clouds just hung there, they just sat there. So I think you got three inches.
I got three inches.
Three inches just east of town. So it was real spotty, but we thanked the Lord for what we got. Let's see what else. Also, kid in fundraiser at Pettis, it was great, they did a great job up there. And I can't say enough about the work that Road and Bridge does. They're understaffed like all the rest of the county departments, but they do a good job, and they react. And I appreciate what you're saying about the priorities and triage, because a tree across the road, you have to get it done. We increased their budget by over a million dollars this last year for hot mix and cold mix to put on the roads. Probably gonna have to do it again, the cost keeps going up. We bought them new equipment, they're utilizing it, they do a good job as well. I can't say enough about the work they do. With that, is there anything anybody would like to add before we move on? Thank you very much.
Number six is public comment. Does anybody want to approach the lecter and give us a comment? This is your chance. Thank you. Number seven, the following items are administrative nature, Commission's court has been furnished documentation to each item, and also titles may act upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by the commission or county attorney.
Mr. Bruce, say it.
We have most in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Thank you very much. Number eight, approved district attorney's request to use a county credit card for appellate trial on September 17, 18, 2005 for the hotel in Park.
This is pretty much that's you.
He's ignoring it.
I was hoping nobody would know. Make sure you record that, see who it was.
Hold on, watch that. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion to approve.
Second. We have most in the second. Any discussion?
Yes. I just wanted to let you know that the hotel that they'll be staying at is the Grant Hyatt Hotel in San Francisco downtown, so that's on record.
Thank you. Questions? Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Both, same sign. Done. Thank you very much. Come around, approved amendment to professional services agreement between Idoke and EEC. These items are this.
It's the district clerks, but this was recommended by the district judges and But this was recommended by the district judges and Judge Moore had already expedited this. So we'll put you now...
Is this housekeeping or is it...
Yes, it's a license.
Will they approve?
Second. We have two motions to approve in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You have to. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 10, approved the 2026 B County shares and constables report fees.
Did they go up? Did they change?
Yeah, that... I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion, second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, please.
So I...
It's just a clerk's item.
So I... Well, that's a great question because I tried to find information from last year to see if there's differences between last year and this year. I couldn't find anything on that one line. So that was gonna be my question, what changed from last year? Did they go up? Did they come down? Did this change? Anyone here to...
I have another show. Is she here?
Is this able to be done with this meeting or can we... Is it one of those chance to say by? I will throw my motion. You have a motion to table?
Second.
Motion, second to table. Any further discussion?
I have to send this bridge to explain what we're...
Yes. Any questions can come back before we finish. We should revisit this on... But right now, the motion is tabled. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. You have to. Number 11, approved eastern credit cards for Aldrich's 80th Annual Conference Lodge and Saturn Casino Hotel from Tessa.
No doubt, first.
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You have to. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 12, approved credit card application for deluxe tire disposal for Road and Bridge. This is a motion in the second. Discussion, something new? I think it is, but wouldn't be...
Yes. It's a new vendor for Road and Bridge because I believe they can't always use the vendor that they were using. So it's just...
Back up.
Any pricing on that or strictly just apply? Any concern for Road and Bridge?
There's a backup. Any further discussion?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. You have to. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 13, Hurricane Harvey, Texas, General Land Office, GLO, Community Development Lock Ranch, CBVG Addison Project update. Commissioner, please, sir.
This belongs to Commissioner Gonzalez and I. There has been a lot of progress on this. And like I said, we did have one meeting in Tynan and discussing with Miss Jimenez and...
Steve Chaney.
Steve Chaney going through and they've got dates and everything. We've built a timeline on the calendar form. I believe that's happened this week with Silver Creek and 631. So built a timeline and then we're moving forward to Pettus after that. So a lot of good work going on there. But you know, all the counties are vying for engineers and construction people right now. Everybody.
And Pettus is the water well and the sources.
Yes, that's correct.
It's gonna be a...
A new water well.
New water well.
Generator.
Generator. And update the service system, several, several being...
Yes.
It's a lot of hard work. You've done a great job.
Thank you, sir. Other than that, is there any more...
No, no, I think that's it. This means we'll have the town hall, so...
And Hanson has been very good. Miss Aldrich has been very, very good about putting all the things together and getting everybody at ease and comfortable with the work.
This wasn't an action item, so...
No, this is an update.
Executive session, to my knowledge, unless you gentlemen have something, I don't know about if we don't have an executive session. The number 14 is the chairman. Take your motion to the chairman. We have a motion in the second to the chairman. Does anybody like to stay longer?
Give me one of those at 10.
This, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I will run everybody at 10 o'clock. We have a budget meeting to finalize the budget and I think to...
Set the rate?
Set the tax rate. It's gonna be a very important meeting. So everyone who's here is more welcome to stay or come back, but we'll be starting again at 10 o'clock.